This is the City of Pleasantville, City Council, Port. Today's date is April 4, 2022. Time is 6:30 PM. This meeting has been duly advertised under the City's State and State Performance Report, open public meeting act, otherwise known as the Sunshine Law. Roll call.
Swan. Davenport.
Present.
Tavallaro.
Here.
Thomas.
Present.
Camona.
Present.
Coria.
Present.
Sis trump.
Present.
Six and a fifths.
Can I say a motion to approve their previous minutes?
Necessary motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Time is happy. Mayor?
Maya Bailey. Come on down. Hello. Seattle, Ohio. Excuse me. Okay, this is the oath of office for Maya Bailey. State of New Jersey, County of Atlantic. I.
I, Maya Bailey.
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
That I will support the Constitution.
That I will support the Constitution.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
And the Constitution.
The Constitution.
Of the state of New Jersey.
Of the state of New Jersey.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
To the same.
To the same.
And the governments established in the United States.
And the government established in the United States.
And in this state.
And in this state.
Under the authority of the people.
Under the authority of the people.
And that I will faithfully.
And I will faithfully.
Impartially.
Impartially.
And justly perform.
And justly perform.
All the duties of the office.
All the duties of the office.
Police officer for the City of Pleasantville.
Police officer for the City of Pleasantville.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations. Okay, would you like to introduce your family and say a few words?
Hi, my name is Maya Bailey. I'm coming from Camden, Camden from East Department. This is my other, Justin. He works for New Jersey Transit. And that is my family back there from Atlantic City in Pleasantville, all of them. And my teacher and teacher friend.
I want to say congratulations, Maya. Congratulations, Corinette. Carla.
Oh, hi.
Thank you.
Welcome to Pleasantville.
I appreciate it.
Congratulations and welcome to Pleasantville.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming here.
I appreciate it.
Congratulations and one more.
Thank you.
Congratulations, Swan. Welcome and be safe out here.
I will, thank you.
I've heard a lot about you, Maya, and I was wondering whether you're related to the Bailes in Pleasantville or not. So I'll see that you are. But congratulations, we look forward to it.
Thank you.
Good luck.
I appreciate it.
Congratulations, Maya. I heard the soft voice and then you said you were from Camden County. No disrespect to Camden County.
I'm from Atlantic County, Atlantic City. I work here.
When I heard the soft voice, I said she can have us. No disrespect to you.
Care. So I have a story to tell about Maya. It's quick, it's really quick, and it's a good story. And the clerk can attest, we take pride every year in bringing young people into the City of Pleasantville and mentoring them and coaching them throughout these years. And we had the opportunity to mentor Maya's cousin, Destiny, some years ago. And Destiny just recently passed her a New Jersey bar. So we are so proud of her. She's a graduate of Pleasantville High School. She went on to Mount Clair and then Rutgers. So at her graduation dinner, the clerk and I were there, and Maya came up to me. First time I've seen, I think it was like a year ago or something. And she said, who are you? And I told her, da-da-da. And she said, I'm on your list. What? What? She said, I'm on your list. She gave me her whole background history, her number, blah, blah, blah. And I said, well, just keep in touch with me. And she did. And she moved up that list. And I came into City Hall maybe a month or so ago, and she was sitting out in Pleasantville waiting for her interview. And after her interview was done, I got nothing but raves. And Chief will attest to that as to how proud he was about how you answered the question and how pleased you were and how well you were prepared. So I think you're going to be an asset to the city and congratulations.
Thanks, I appreciate it.
Be safe. We're glad to have you.
Thank you.
Especially after the stories that I heard and just all the great reviews that I've heard.
I appreciate it, thank you.
Okay, take care.
Thank you.
Hey, Rick, real quick. I just wanted to say for Maya, for you, people in the audience here, when she came to our interview, and I've been to a bunch of interviews with officers and stuff like that, and I have to say, this young lady, she came into our interview and she interviewed so well. I mean, the only thing left to do was to hire her. I mean, she came in here, I mean, she was just prepared, she was calm, it was like she was sitting there talking to people she knew, and I'd never seen Maya before or any of us that I've spoken to. I mean, she just did that good of an interview. I think she's going to be a good asset to this team. She is number eight for female officers in the City of Pleasantville. I want to thank all the officers that are intended, that came in to support in Maya. So we look forward to what you're going to bring to the City of Pleasantville. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Next is the capital improvement report by City Engineer Lauren Newman of City Municipal Associates.
Boy, I don't know how I followed that. So good evening. I'll focus on capital reporting. If you could just focus on projects that have changed. I'm sure you have the report, but a lot of those are projects that are on maintenance bond, which means they are complete and we're just waiting for that maintenance period. So by way of active projects, I've been in touch with city administration that we were awarded county funding for the boxing ring upgrades. So I'm hopeful to advance that project shortly, but I did want to note that wasn't in my report because I had found out about that one afterwards. So happy to advance that. As it relates to the DOT funded projects, we have a grant along Ansley Boulevard. We do know that we have sanitary sewer upgrades which are required there. We have submitted a loan application to the I-Bank which would help facilitate that project. As most of you are aware, the DOT will fund resurfacing, but it actually won't fund the infrastructure. So that's where that project is. We have been actively following up with DOT to ensure that we can secure extensions of that funding. As it relates to Decatur Avenue, that falls under that same category. Sanitary sewer upgrades are required. That is also part of our I-Bank loan. And again, we continue to follow up with the DOT to ensure that our grant funding for the roadway improvement stays intact. As it relates to a 2020 municipality grant which was for Tunis, Harrison, and Prospect Avenue, those are being advanced. We had bid the project previously. The bids came in higher than we had anticipated, but we have that project back out to bid and will be receiving bids April 12th so that that project can advance. There's a small sanitary sewer portion to that project as well. The city is going to be funding that independently. We also have received municipal aid both in 2021 and 2022 for Doughty Road and Park Avenue. That was a phased project. We do know that there will be sanitary sewer upgrades required there. So I've been working with your financial officer as well as our grant writer to see if that can be our next loan into the I-Bank to facilitate those improvements. We were awarded a streetscape grant along Old Turnpike specifically from Main Street to Franklin. That would be an extension of the existing streetscape that you see out there. That project has been authorized for design and is advancing through my office, so that you'll see shortly. And that's everything I have by way of projects that have changed within the past couple of months. Happy to answer any questions.
Yes, on Doughty Road and Park Avenue, how far does that go each way? I mean, I know you have to come from, I forgot, the Main Street, Broad Street right there down, but as far as going, you know, towards New Road, how far does it go down?
I would say it was limited by the bike path.
Yeah, so Laura did mention that it was phased because we did initially estimate it out from Broad Street to New Road.
Yes.
But it was very costly, so we phased it out from Broad Street to Traxx and then the next one to be the Traxx to New Road.
Yep.
Because it all needs to be done.
It all needs to be done, but it's so costly to not, we're phasing it out.
Well, let's take care of it.
I forgot you go on that street.
I have a question about Ansley Avenue.
Yes.
A couple of years ago, I guess it was great money that we got, and they put up a median on Ansley Avenue. There's trees in it, the trees are long gone. Is there any idea of taking that median out because it impedes the flow of traffic?
So I think we have to maintain that Boulevard-style entrance. However, we have spoke with Public Works as well as administration on what should be in the median. And I think we talked about actually paving it or striping it so that we didn't have landscaping where we wouldn't have irrigation or an area that we'd have to mow and maintain. So that can certainly be continued to work through the design process, but I think as we looked at it, we did not want it to be a grassed area. But I do think we need to maintain the Boulevard-style entrance.
That is correct. Well, that, because for years, for people who have been here much longer than I, it was always two lanes. You could make the left and get north or make the left. Make the left and go south and make the right and go north. Now it's like a one and a half lane, and it's kind of putting more pressure on Decatur Avenue, which does have a light, which that has issues with its lighting and timing because of the black horse biting everything. So I was just wondering if they could kind of look into either widening it a little bit with still some kind of...
I certainly, we talked about that during the design process when we did that street project, and I think the thought process back then was to alleviate those two unofficial lanes where one is turning right and one is turning left. So I think, you know, we do need to put pressure where there is a light, but one of the things that we're working with our grant analysts is to get those lights synced so that you won't run into those heavy traffic congestion.
Thank you.
Laura, you spoke at the beginning, you said something in reference to infrastructure. Can you just explain that, the streets that have been done?
Sure. So essentially what happens is the city's been very successful to get what I would refer to as NJDOT grants. They typically do municipal aid, transit village, safe routes to transit, too. There's a series of them, bike grants the city has received, but those actually don't cover infrastructure, so they won't support if there were water upgrades or sanitary sewer upgrades. What ends up happening is as you get a grant to repave a roadway, you need to evaluate your infrastructure under the roadway. And so based upon, you know, our analysis, we usually have a TV, we usually review that with the Public Works Department just to review the condition. And what we found on most of these roadways is we have an aged infrastructure. We have a lot of clay pipe, we have a lot of brick and mortar manholes. So as you're going through then to do a resurfacing project, it makes the most sense to then upgrade your utilities so that you're not ripping it up maybe in a year, maybe you get five years, maybe you only get a month before you may have a break. And a lot of times when you're disturbing, when you have those type of conditions, that can happen. So the DOT doesn't fund that, those improvements. So for infrastructure, the only opportunity I've really seen other than more of the federal money that's come post-COVID is really through the I-Bank, which is generally a low-interest loan. Sometimes you can get some principal forgiveness. That's usually the only mechanism that municipalities have to receive independent funding which would help support infrastructure. And generally what you find is you really want those to be larger-scale projects, I typically say when you're going through the I-Bank because it's all federally funded. So you usually want, I usually say like a million dollars is almost where you want to be in your utility upgrades to make it work, the amount of work that you have to do to get that loan through the state.
All right, thank you. It was very nice to see everybody. I hope everybody's well. Enjoy it, rest good night. Thank you.
At this time, we're going to executive session.
So now for the record, pursuant to the Open Public Meeting Act, the exclusions of subsection 5, any matter involving the purchase lease or acquisition of real property with public funds is one of the matters that we're going to be disclosing under certain fund privilege as well as contractual negotiations under subsection 7 of the Open Public Meeting Act. So we'll be out approximately 30 minutes or so. Good evening, everyone. We just retired from executive session and the purpose for contractual negotiations and also transactions involving the lease purchase or acquisition of our property with public funds. And the items that we discussed were California Avenue project as well as the sewer construction that we proposed.
Okay, next is amended review, first on the amended ordinance number four, amending chapter 116, chapter 300 of the city code relating to operations of cannabis within the city. This is the second reading, public hearing, we held during regular session. Next is Resolution 75, authorizing the transfer of ownership of a Pleasantville Police K-9 dog lease to Officer Corey Frosty. Resolution 76, complaint in the month of April as autism or autism. Resolution 77, approving the incidental modification to Project Scope Limits funding for the fiscal year 2017 municipal urban aid class. Resolution 78.
Council President is asking you to make a comment on Resolution 77. Fiscal year 2017, there was some unextended funds from a project back in 2017, and this resolution will help us move those funds to the current project. So we don't lose it, we use it.
Resolution 78, authorizing the tax collective to refund taxes on certain properties. Resolution 79, authorizing the issuance of a duplicate tax sale certificate. Next is review of the bill lists.
Evening. Talking about the bills that were paid between this council meeting and this council meeting, really the one in the middle you see a page where it says check registered by check date. Phoenix, Pro Phoenix Corporation, that was for body cam cameras as well as software and support for next three years for these cameras. Everything that's recorded has to be stored somewhere, and they're the ones who take care of making sure that everything is properly aligned. And then the wire transfers were payroll, city payroll was 599, and 607 was a void. There was a problem with our processing of it with CASA. We were able to, we had to rerun it. And then 499 is interest on a bond that was, we had to pay. The bills we're looking to approve going out, on the bottom of page one, you'll see Bowman and Company, here's the first draw of their auditing contract. We've been dealing with that for the last three months regarding last year's work. They've done, and the financial statement, they've done the debt statement. We've also been working on doing the budget. So this is one draw.
One draw, what is the?
The total bill is like 52,000. So this is kind of a thank you for what you've done to work. On page two, you'll see CME Associates. Near all those are either escrow or grant payments coming out, going to them. When we talk about escrows, they're for development, people say like ZIO and for DIO. We have some, do some cannabis mapping that is our cost. Most of the other things are involved with chocolate field cost analysis, that's on Scarborough. And then the solar clock at the very beginning is on the network preservation grant. Near down the bottom, you'll see modern appraisals. We have a tax appeal pending for Pleasant Manor, and we need a professional appraiser. That was the cost to do that. They're still working on it. Once that's done, the check over will be released. If you go over to page three, about halfway down, you see SHI International. We are upgrading our software for both, for our computers for virus protection.
You said page, I'm sorry.
SHI.
Page three.
Page three. It's vendor number 18132, SHI International. They, through the recommendations of Egger Township, these are people who would best support us and best protect our software systems, both police, fire, and overall yards. These are virus protection and everything to keep a firewall going on.
Is this from here or?
This annual.
And?
These are really also the recommendation of our insurance provider. On page four, you'll see lawman supply. We have replacement body armor, part of this is a grant, believe it or not, but body armor has expiration date on it, looks like five years. So we replace them every five years. Surprised me, too. And then most of the other bills we go through there are normal operating bills until we get to page six. And near the bottom there is US Security Associates. They provide the security over the library, which we are reimbursed by the county. So that's for, it's probably four months worth of bills. We will bill the county every six months and they reimburse us for that cost. And that's it. Otherwise, we're just normal operating expenses that we deal with every day. Any questions?
Next up is the public portion. We offer the public portion as people attend it, except for Island only. We come forward. The domain. We have three minute time.
Crystal, oh, wow. Good evening. For Island number five, as far as the resolution number 78, how many properties are receiving these refunds and what is the total amount?
Yeah, keep the, back breaks down. The property's going to be announced.
Okay, thank you.
Good evening. My name is Jerry King. I just had a couple of concerns. I don't really like to come to meetings like this, but I just had a couple of questions about this sewer proposal that's on the table. And, yeah, I doubt it isn't, is it? That's not 77?
Well, if you can come back, Mr. King, you want a public portion if you want to.
Is this not public portion?
No, this is public portion for general.
Okay, when does that take place?
It takes place towards the end. I give you the queue when it's time to come.
Anyone else? Want to take a closer look at the portion? All in favor? Hope for discussion with council. We're going to council.
Yes, I do. I have something I'd like to share that was written to me for our police. Oftentimes when things go wrong, they don't hesitate, people don't hesitate to call, but it's good to get back late when they do well. And this letter came from Mr. Arthur B. Dennis. This is special thanks and appreciation for Pleasantville Police. Dear Madam Mayor, I am a 76-year-old man living at the above address. On March 17, 2022, I filed a criminal complaint to Pleasantville Police against a Pleasantville-based affordable towing and salvage company manager for taking away my Toyota vehicle under the pretext of wanting to buy it. I went to the two locations where he claimed to be working, but workers there said they did not know him. However, one week after filing the complaint, I received a call from the Pleasantville Police revealing that the accused of the stolen vehicle had been identified and would like for us to meet in Pleasantville on March 21, 2022 to settle the vehicle question. I went to the exact location but was denied entry. I went to Pleasantville Police and complained. The same police who uncovered the vehicle escorted me to the accused and advised him to pay the $400 charged for the vehicle. After witnessing the payment, the police escort left. Therefore, my special thanks and appreciation go to the Pleasantville Police Escort as well as the Pleasantville Police Chain of Command for the professional manner in which he handled my complaint. I understand the Pleasantville Police works directly under your leadership as such. My special thanks and appreciation also go out to you and your staff, including the Pleasantville City Council members. Sincerely, Mr. Arthur B. Dennis. And I just wanted the public to know that our police are working hard and just try and work with them and counsel. He's saying thank you to you, too. I just want to say.
Good evening. This is the City of Pleasantville, City Council, regular meeting. The time, the day's date is April 4, 2022. The time is now 7:57 PM. This meeting has been duly advertised under the City's State and State Performance, open public meeting act, otherwise known as the Sunshine Law. Would you please stand for certification and reflect. Roll call.
Swan. Davenport.
Present.
Tavallaro. Thomas. Brennick. Camona.
Present.
Coria.
Present.
Sis trump.
Present.
Say a motion to this, that's on the reading, three decisions.
This is so.
Mayor, have you?
No, you do not, thank you.
Okay, first is ordinance number four, second reading, public care is required, is amending chapter 116 and chapter 300 of the city code regulating the operations of cannabis within the city. of cannabis within the city.
Motion.
Okay. This is a public care. If anyone from the public would like to come up and say something regarding this number four, please come forward and state your name and your concern.
Priscilla Noel. What are the amendments that are about to take place as far as the ordinance or how cannabis will be regulated within the city?
Within the city's redevelopment areas only, that's what this ordinance contains too, that will allow us schools to be, that will allow cannabis operations to operate within a certain distance within a school, whereas there are certain limitations outside of redevelopment area.
So does that mean like certain amount of feet from the school?
Yes.
Is there anything else? Then you could say in redevelopment, does that mean that there are certain areas that are designated?
As redevelopment areas, yes, that is.
Is there a list of those areas?
Yes, we can get you those.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, so you know, one, I need a motion to close the public care.
Motion.
Second. Okay. Now I need a motion to, is that roll call?
Necessary motion.
Second.
Roll call, Davenport.
Yes.
Fennel Aaron.
Yes.
Thomas.
Yes.
Kamona.
Yes.
Korea.
Yes.
This order has been adopted. Resolution seventy-five, authorizing the transfer of ownership of the Pleasantville Police K-9 dog aids to Officer Corey Frosty.
Motion.
Roll call, Davenport.
Yes.
Fennel Aaron.
Yes.
Thomas.
Yes.
Kamona.
Yes.
Korea.
Yes.
Sistrum.
Yes.
Resolution approved. Resolution seventy-six, proclaiming the month of April as autism awareness.
Motion.
Second.
Roll call, Davenport.
Yes.
Fennel Aaron.
Yes.
Thomas.
Yes.
Kamona.
Yes.
Korea.
Yes.
Sistrum.
Yes.
Resolution approved. Resolution seventy-seven, approving the incidental modification to project scope, limits, funding for the fiscal year twenty-seventeen municipal and urban aid funds.
Second.
Second.
Roll call, Davenport.
Yes.
Fennel Aaron.
Yes.
Thomas.
Yes.
Kamona.
Yes.
Korea.
Yes.
Sistrum.
Yes.
Resolution approved. Resolution seventy-eight, authorizing the tax collecting and refund taxes on certain properties.
Motion.
Second.
Roll call, Davenport.
Yes.
Fennel Aaron.
Yes.
Thomas.
Yes.
Kamona.
Yes.
Korea.
Yes.
Sistrum.
Yes.
Resolution approved. Resolution seventy-nine, authorizing the issuance of a duplicate tax sales certificate. Motion.
Second.
Roll call, Davenport.
Yes.
Fennel Aaron.
Yes.
Thomas.
Yes.
Kamona.
Yes.
Korea.
Yes.
Sistrum.
Yes.
Motion approved. I'm sorry, resolution approved. Now I need a motion for approval of the bill.
Motion. Second.
Roll call, Davenport.
Yes.
Fennel Aaron.
Yes.
Thomas.
Yes.
Kamona.
Yes.
Korea.
Yes.
Sistrum.
Yes.
Motion approved. Next is public portion.
Next is a public portion. Anyone who wants to come forward, ten minutes time.
Three.
No, no. Ten minutes is a long time. Three minutes time.
Nobody else wants to go? I just have some concerns about the numbers. I'm not much of an emotional individual, but I do, I deal with numbers because numbers don't lie. And when I looked at a copy of that contract, I found it very similar to the contract that was presented to the city of Fayetteville a couple of years ago, Fayetteville, North Carolina, and another municipality in Florida, who was approached by the same hedge fund to do the same type of project, to take over their public utilities and to give them a certain amount of money upfront, which I know the city is, you know, strapped. But the math doesn't work. When you look at getting a couple hundred million, which will give you a band-aid for right now, but then when you read the fine print and you see that, see you're paying back two to three times that, and then there's interest on top of that, you know who ends up paying that, right? The people. And I lived in DC area for many years and I watched this government, the city of DC, they're constantly bouncing the budget on the backs of people and it's not fair. And the other thing I want to remind everybody on this council, that you all took an oath to support and defend the Constitution of the United States against all enemies, foreign and domestic, and to bear true faith and allegiance to the same, and to faithfully execute the duties of your office. You took an oath to the federal constitution and you took an oath to the state of New Jersey constitution as a side, but the federal constitution reigns supreme. And what I'm seeing here, I think many of you know, is not what's best for the city of Pleasantville, nor the people of Pleasantville. Now, I know politics can be a dirty game and I know that there's a lot that goes on that's, it's not squeaky clean, it's dirty by nature. However, I would ask each and every one of you to think about what you did when you raised your right hand and you swore that oath, the same oath I swore in the fire department for this city, the same oath I swore for the United States Marine Corps to serve this nation. I took that oath seriously. I ask all of you to consider and think about what you're about to do that you know is not beneficial for the city. The numbers don't add up and we know this company, it's a hedge fund and I watched them do this in DC. They come into a distressed community and they offer the community to carry it and the community goes for it. And then the taxes go through the roof, the sewer bills go through the roof, the people get taxed out of the city and the city of Washington DC, there's nowhere affordable for a regular person to live now because these subcontractors came in and they did the same type of shady deals. And I know my time is up and some people took our oath under the table from there.
Hold, 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 now you're going, you're accusing me of.
I'm not, I didn't accuse anything. I was, I said DC.
Don't accuse.
I said DC.
All right, all right.
Well, if you.
Well, I don't know, the president might be okay with it, but I'm not.
Well, I was referring to DC. I was referring to DC. And you shouldn't be only defensive if you're not guilty.
Oh, no, I'm not, I'm not defensive. I'm just letting you know, don't accuse.
I don't, I don't do that.
The council were doing that.
I was a Marine Corps officer, I know discretion. I never accused anybody. All I'm saying is that you guys took an oath and I want you to contemplate that as you get ready to pass this bill, because you do it, you might be violating the law.
Thank you. Anyone else want to party?
Yes. Good evening, my name is Dale Archie. I have a question for Mr. Ward. I'm sorry, Mayor Ward. I understand the lady was here a little bit before we went to closed session. I think she was from DOT, was she? She was speaking about the landscape project as far as lighting.
Oh, yeah.
Certain areas. What was that?
City area.
City area, I'm sorry. Um, but the lighting goes throughout Pleasantville, because Pleasantville as a whole is dark in many areas, so if you just do the street skate, I know that's designated for, you know, certain areas.
We're going with that line of electric and CME is the one that they are going around doing the assessment.
Okay.
Also, along with the employees, along the A and I go around one night.
Okay.
All over the place and we're asking residents to do the same.
Okay. And if you don't hear feedback from the residents, it's left up to the electric company, whatever they find, as far as areas that need to be.
Well, they're, they're identifying some lights off, some dark areas also, but it's a collective area.
Okay, so just from my understanding, it's four throughout the city of Pleasantville?
Yes.
Okay. Next question I had was. The next thing, since we're talking about lighting anyway, the parking lot back here, where we park when we get out of cars.
At city hall?
No, over here, there's a lot over here, I'm sorry, this, on that side, over here. Yeah, in front of city hall on the side. It's dark at night.
Yes.
You know, can we get some lighting in that area as well? So when we leave these meetings, you know, the ladies, you know, will have some light, you know, that keeps the crooks down and sort of words. Also, I want to say like the last meeting that I was in attendance, help me with this understanding. The closing of the meeting when council gives their remarks to the public, thanking them for coming out, when I looked at the video, it seems like we got a tongue lashing and it wasn't fair. And I'm not directing this to you, I'm speaking to the whole council. So council president, I'm sure you can address that to your fellow colleagues as far as in your closing, as far as addressing the public, as far as thanking them for coming out, it shouldn't be where you have that last moment to lash the public. So if you think I'm incorrect, you can watch the video yourself and see.
Excuse me, Mr. Dale, is this?
No, 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 this is to, to full body, full body. Also, gentlemen and ladies, when you're speaking from the podium, in the city, we really can't hear you too clearly, okay? The gentleman spoke about the sewer thing, so that's, that's already answered, I'm not going into that. Are two minutes up?
Yes.
I'll return.
Three minutes.
Three, okay, I'll return.
Thank you, Mr. Dale.
You're welcome.
Anyone else want to pause?
My name is Linda Carrington and I reside in Pleasantville. I wasn't here at the last meeting, but I did have, was afforded opportunity to view the YouTube video and I too shared the sentiment of Brother Dale with regard to how the council was responding to the public. And I understand that things get touching and emotions get high. However, as city elected officials, it behooves you to maintain a level head and keep your emotions under control. And I want to particularly speak to our councilperson, Davenport. You were really, really, you really disappointed me. I have known you for a while and you disappointed me in how you were responding to the, to the public and I think it's quite unfair when people want to, to air their concerns about a city that they pay taxes in to the people that they elected to represent them. And I want to say that sometimes you do that very poorly and it's very unfair and it's unfortunate. However, I have a few questions with regard to, to this sewer pandemic or plandemic. I wanted to know what is going to be the cost of the residence of Pleasantville Sewer Bill in one year? Can somebody answer that?
Is, what is it, two percent?
Two percent of what we're paying right now and what does that calculate to be?
No, no, it's a terrible, it's a terrible.
I don't have the contract in front of me, so I don't want to air and off the top of my head, I kind of know what that is, but I think it will be fair for you and the public to get the right information. So if you would like to either contact me and I can get that document for you, I can certainly do that. But here's, and here's another reason why I'm hesitant on answering that question, because the agreement has not been finalized. So within the agreement, there's terms and as to what the first year will be, what the second year will be and through the thirty-nine year period. We don't know at this moment when or if that first year is going to start. So the conversation was that the first year, if it was to go into effect, would be a zero percent the first year, then escalating percentages thereafter. But I think the fair answer for you and others who are concerned about that is to somehow, and I want to defer to council to make sure that we can share that information to the public, okay? So however you would like for me to get that to you, I will certainly get that to you.
Okay, well, no, no pun intended, it's.
One second, one second.
No, no.
Okay, because I want to make sure I didn't fail to answer.
Okay, because the last time that I was here, you gave me your card and you offered me, you afforded me, or you gave me the promise or that I can call you and I've called you on several occasions, ma'am, and I have not received a phone call back because my question was how many, how many businesses in Pleasantville are still swimming, they're above board? And I've called over and over and I have not received a response.
I don't know, you spoke to?
I didn't speak to anybody because nobody answered.
Well, that's a different.
And I left, and I left messages for you.
You didn't leave a message on my phone because anybody that calls me, I'm telling you and anybody else who attempts to make a call to me, I respond to the calls. So I don't know where you left these messages.
So are you calling me a liar?
No, I'm saying I did not.
Because you gave, you gave me your card.
Linda also said I did not get a message. That's all I'm saying to you. I am not accusing you of lying, I'm saying I did not get a message. Now, let's go back to your initial question. If you want to get the information today, I am in the office five days a week, more than, more than most people are there, I am accessible and I am willing and able to give you the information.
So is the number on the card for me?
Can you, yes, it is. Can you give me your number? So now I'll be, the onus is on me and I'll give you.
Okay, I'll do that.
Okay, please, thank you.
I'll do that. And the other thing I wanted to know, oh, it's over, okay, thank you.
Anyone else want to pause?
Hello, Tim Jones, Gladwell. I just want to make two quick points, just to address the question that they just asked about your rates. In the contract, it does say zero percent increase for the first year, but it does have a note all the way at the bottom that says this, however, will be adjusted to inflation. So, and that's considered a two percent. So if inflation is seven percent, then you can expect a five percent increase the first year. That's just basic interpretation of one little piece of character.
Anyone else want to pause? No. Anyone else want to pause?
Right, so I didn't get my.
Of course, you can keep the time if you want.
I know, but they're not looking at me, but you're telling me I'm playing this time. And if we can, can I just, prior to you speaking, ma'am? I know Mr. Archie was attempting to get up, I just wanted the chair or the solicitor to explain why it was no. We just had a question arise that we're not responding in the best manner. So I want to make sure that everybody understands the protocols of how we're going to run the council meetings from the chair seat. So can someone explain, so it's just not a no and you would understand, you know, why the heads were shaking now?
I understand, I understand.
No, no, no. It needs to be explained.
Three minutes, three minutes on time, and one time if somebody. Three minutes on a time limit on when you speak and one time if somebody want to pause.
Could that be sent to the next meeting because we didn't know about that? I just had one question to ask the mayor at all. Could you give us the thought that courage?
Go ahead.
And start that next meeting, who we didn't know about? Um, Mayor Ward, excuse me for being rude, because I should have asked and I should have addressed you because you are the mayor. What is your feel, your take on this thing as far as this sewer thing?
Well, in Bernard Capital, I have to be honest with you, in the beginning, when we started this talk, first of all, our infrastructure is bad, bad, bad. And we're not desperate, but we are seeking everything that we can to try and be able to fix the sewer so that we can fix the streets, as I said last meeting. And when we started the talks, I talked to Mr. Bobby Laws that was here last week and we were having many conversations about it and I would, I had pause for the thirty-nine years and I, the thirty-nine years and the rate at which sewer was going to be increasing, that was my problem at that time, my issues at that time. And then we discussed it and I warmed up to it. It, you know, it seemed more like something that we could do. But then in the meantime, things started changing as far as the conversations that we had and I wasn't as comfortable with it. And I have to be honest with you, I just, now that there's other avenues such as the infrastructure bill, the bonding and different things, I'm, I'm open to that. You know, I mean, we're still having discussions with Bernard Ca, I mean, about Bernard Capital, but it's just that now that there's other avenues, I just, I'm a taxpayer too, so all that you all are out there complaining about, I'm not, you know, I'm not exempt from that. So at this point, I'm just leaning, I'm just, all my, all of the options are open, but I don't feel, honestly, I don't feel the way that I felt.
Anyone else want to pause?
My name is Anna Cuttana and I live here in Pleasantville. And I'm glad you said that to me because I wanted just to reach out to you and realize I went around my neighborhood and I asked a certain people behind me on the side of here, one, she doesn't speak very good English, but she understood a little bit what's going on. There's a lot of residents here in Pleasantville that do not understand this sewer bill, this sewer thing. Because way, I was here when they were reading it and it's a contract, you guys are reading all this stuff, but it does. reading all this stuff, but it doesn't make any kind of sense. So we need somebody to tell us in layman's terms. And I know everybody's against having like a rally or something open up so people know what they're getting into. You, our our district, our city of Pleasantville, there's a lot of residents out there that don't know this is happening. And I just think it needs to be addressed that people do. Now, if you go out, you explain it to them, I think it should be put on about. We had to vote for crime seeker thing, the whatever. Why ain't we, why wasn't this on something? And you said two years, a year we were in pandemic, so how did you vote through this in one of those years of 2020? That's what I'm asking, because everything was closed down. So I'm just saying, we we need to stop, there's other avenues out there, but let's make sure the public understands what's going on here. That's all I'm asking. It's just like, I want the public to understand. And if they don't come out and they don't do what they're supposed to do, then you can sit back and say, I did my best. You're the first woman mayor of Pleasantville, I'm honored. I love to see women coming up. But I also want you to understand, there's people out here, good people, who don't know what's going on. And I think we need to make sure that the public here understands what's going on. You don't want to pass this and then down the line, people standing outside City Hall saying, why is my sewer bill up? Not knowing, that's all I'm asking. And thank you for tonight. And Mr. Davenport, Mr. Sishtrom, I was here last week, that young lady man you told her from Northville, she works in Pleasantville. She works here, she has opportunity to say what she wants to say. And I thought you were really harsh because when you did it at the end, no one could respond to you. So I just want you to realize, you never know who's coming up here and they might say they live in Northville or something, they might be working here in Pleasantville and they're entitled to say what they want to say. Thank you very much, Mayor.
Okay, but I wanted to clarify to you too, that yes, during the pandemic, we weren't, the offices weren't closed.
Right.
But we have been Zoom, we had regular committee meetings, we had regular council meetings and everything was Zoom.
When you were doing Zoom and during a pandemic, people were trying to figure out how to feed their families.
I get it.
They did not come and worry about what was going because their thing is, they shut down everything. So they're, to us, you're not having any meetings because you're shut down. There's people looking for food, they didn't have it. Okay, there's, you know, they came into work one day and then they were told they didn't have a job, they're laid off. And some of them, when they were opened back up, some of them didn't get their job back or they had to start at a lower rate. So I understand what you're saying, but at that time, we didn't have it. I mean, that's during the pandemic. And I don't have disrespect or anything like that, I just want everybody to slow it down. I hear you, baby, I know.
Thank you.
Good evening, David Carrington, I live in Pleasantville. In regards to the sewer proposal, what's the assurance of this company not already will be taken over? And if they are, who's going to fit that bill? Who would fit that bill?
I don't, I'm talking, listen, there is no assurance of it, but they've been around for years, all right? They haven't folded. And there is no perception that they're going to fold. I mean, if you want to ask a general question like, you know, you can ask any question and make it negative and we can't answer that. You know, I understand what you're saying, but they've been around, they've been doing this job in different cities all over the country. As a matter of fact, all over the world, if I'm not mistaken, they haven't folded. They haven't filed bankruptcy. So that's the insurance that we have. We look at their record, just like you do with anything else, you look at someone's track record and see how they operate. And these guys have operated, from what we've seen in all the contracts that we've looked at, they've done a great job.
Okay, Bay Hill, New Jersey is one, Fayetteville, no. Other cities and other states, no.
But they haven't folded, you said.
Exactly, yeah. So after two years, right, our taxes will go up 2%, correct? Sewer, sewer, sewer. They'll go up 2%. What happens in five years? What happens in seven years? What happens in 10 years? At that point in time, will we be paying 15%? Will we be paying 20%? Is that a thought, a consideration as to how much the taxpayers in Pleasantville are going to pay after that 2% increase?
Mr. Carrington, to the best of my knowledge, the first year is 0%. However, we're dealing with CPI, the cost of price index. They have figured 2% into the increase. Right now, the CPI is 7.1, 6.9, so there's already two, so you're looking at almost 4% on top of the other. Okay, so the first is zero, it might stay zero, but the second year, I believe, is 3%.
4%.
Or 4%. From 4%, you add on another 4%, thereabouts, so it's 8%.
Excuse me, excuse me. They said last week that that's not what.
You was lying.
That's what they.
I'm just saying my understanding of it. If one answers, I'm going to tell them my understanding. If I'm wrong, somebody can say I'm wrong and I'm sure I'm wrong. The next year's rates from year three to year 15, I believe, are an increase of 5%.
Correct.
With an increase again of the CPI on top, 4%. So now you're looking at an increase of 9% from year three to year 15.
Thank you.
That's my understanding.
And you're right.
I don't know if you can take it to the bank, that's just what's.
That's what's very wrong.
And that's just the base.
It's actually worse than that. Okay. Mayor Ward, you said there were there were other avenues?
Yes, and what I'm talking about is us bonding, which is what we would have done if there was no Bernard Capital or any other company. And the infrastructure bill that the president just has, there's supposed to be a lot of infrastructure money coming. And hopefully Pleasantville, normally we don't get a lot, obviously we don't, and that's why we were looking for other avenues. But with this bill, there's supposed to be a lot of money coming that we can tap into that will be able.
And we only have to look into this company.
I'm sorry?
Instead of looking into this company.
Yeah, as an, yeah, as an alternative.
Okay, all right. My next question is, where are we with the transfer station?
Since you were last here, nothing's any different.
Okay.
There's been no other talks or anything since you were last here.
Okay. I would like to say, could you please take into consideration the the traffic concerns on every artery leading into and out of Pleasantville? We're talking about major congestion and everybody's going to be affected with this congestion on Washington Avenue, Franklin Boulevard, Main Street and Route 9. Hope you take that into into consideration. Thank you.
Anyone else in the public?
Uh, can I get, can I assume some of my three minutes back? I just was asking, I don't want to break protocol or. Because I, I used my whole three minutes because I was in conversation.
Go ahead, go ahead.
Good evening, my name is Collette Longville, I live here at 15 on Second Street. I'm not here about, I'm also concerned about the sewer and the dump, but also we see the letter.
I'm sorry, what did you name you?
Collette Longville. My mother's mad, Longville at 15 on Second Street. We received the letter and we went into the Zoom meeting last week in reference to the substance abuse halfway house that you're creating for the women on at 5th on Second Street. And it came into the meeting and I'm not sure what happened. You guys were going to talk about it and I didn't hear anything about it. So I'm here to ask exactly what's going on with this. Are we, are you guys putting that there or did we get a vote about it or?
Sure, that's zoning, that we, yeah, that was a zoning board meeting.
Okay.
So I'm going to give you my card, right? And ask that you give me a call, please, so that I can get you to the right person so that you can get your questions answered regarding the zoning issue. Okay.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Anyone else in the public?
Oh, I thought I could, I thought I could return.
Did anybody ask my question about my three minutes? I just was waiting for my question to be answered. But any, any questions? My, my question was, we're 18 million in debt and you want the, and this company is giving you 15 million upfront. 18 minus 15 is $3 million still in debt. So help me with this rationale because I don't understand. If you get the 15, you're still going to be in debt. How do you plan to satisfy the 3? The other portion I had, the other thing that was concerning me as well is, I heard Mayor Ward said that Biden has approved infrastructure nationally. If we go ahead with this company, will we be able to get that money from the federal government?
Yes.
No.
Yes.
Yes, first question.
Yeah, they're going to, they're going to go go into a green. The federal government is somebody that has a 39-year concession. Yeah, right. Come on, man. Have a brain.
Okay.
So, let me, let me just, gentlemen, if I can, two things, I want to ask you a few questions. One is the repayment plan of the debt. That's a simple question because we've been talking about that for a while. So I'm going to let our CFO just give you the payment plan that is proposed on the table for that. The infrastructure bill, as we understand it, because that is a question that council has been asking, is available to eligible public entities. So in saying that, because we're not selling the asset, that we'll still be owners of the asset, we should, we still should be an eligible public entity to tap into the infrastructure money. The company itself will not be able to apply for any of the infrastructure because they are considered a private entity. So Barry, if you want to come up, just real quick and just talk about the repayment plan of the 18 million dollars.
Well, actually, we're like 15 million dollars in debt. 10 million dollars on the current side, 5 million dollars on the sewer side. If it's 15 million dollars that we're getting as a payment, 5 million dollars will automatically pay off the sewer debt that has to be done. The other 10 million dollars will, the option is pay off current fund debt or use that to pay down taxes. But I got to tell you, and I've, we're typically in debt, whether it's 10 million or 15 million or whatever the number is. Most towns always operate with debt. We can't buy a fire truck, million dollar fire truck, with cash in pocket. We're bonded for, that, we're going in debt for. You can't buy police cars, uh, fires, police cars, 30,000, 40,000 pieces, you have to go in debt. And that debt is parlayed over a number of years to make it more powerful for your taxpayer. I don't like it, I like that debt-free, but that's the way the road, you can't be debt-free. But it's just, cities will always be in debt, I mean, you'll see major companies borrow money. My wife, yeah, I tell you, counsel, my wife works for a council, they make out, they have 10 million dollars in cash, they go in debt because they don't want to spend their money. They borrow money cheaply. 2%? That's great. And that's what they do to build their infrastructure up with investment incentives for wherever it is. Towns will be, the 15 million dollars we're getting, 5 million dollars we have to pay off the sewer debt, the other 10 million dollars will have to subdivide the current fund for a couple of years and then, you know, what happens?
What's the current fund?
The current fund is what's our operating tax. When we.
That's funding all over.
That's, that's the tax money.
Okay.
The sewer rate is the sewer rate. The money don't go making. So I can't take my tax money and pay the sewer just because it's being used to pay the police, pay the fire department, pay utilities, pay everything that's operating the city. Fixing puddles where we can, the things with the sewer, that's on the separate sewer side. And that's through your tax, through your sewer rate of 500 dollars a year. So we, we have two separate, two separate pockets for money.
Okay. So, so everybody here have families. And so. And so with the families, okay, I'm talking, with the families, they talk about the finances of the home.
Correct.
So like a city and a relationship with its residents, they should talk about some of these finances with the residents and let them know, okay, you're going to be taxed a little bit more, but I'm going to tell you what you're going to get for your money. So we need to have a time.
Well, we do that every year when we.
Well, Barry, Barry, that, that, we're going to take that into consideration, I think that's more of a council discussion than our CFO.
Well, my time is up, so I haven't.
That's okay, I'm going to explain to him that he doesn't have to try to answer it.
Good evening, gentlemen, I live here in Pleasantville. My, my concern is my sewer bill also. I don't want it to rise now for some, in the next couple of years. The, the main thing is, how is it, it's that we're 5 million dollars in debt with the sewer. How did we get there?
That's your typical bonding for your, to kind of fix your infrastructure.
And what was done, because there's no infrastructure done.
Yeah, there was. We have a, we have a very old, old system that is completely deteriorated. So really, 5 million dollars is not a lot of debt for municipality. So we've been piecemealing this thing together for many, many, many years.
We said many, many, many years. So this just didn't happen overnight, this has been going on for years. And now it's come to a head where something has to be done. And our, what option we have is either this, sell it or buy it. We're already in debt. So if you buy it, that means we're going to be even more in debt. So either you're going to pay more in sewer payments or you're going to pay more in taxes. Either way, we're going to be paying.
Absolutely.
So either you're going to sell it, get rid of it, wipe your hand, wash your hands of it, or go with this deal. That, that's the only two options that I believe that we have. With this being, the sewer, uh, issue with the infrastructure being so bad, like you said, it happened overnight. Why are we just doing something now? Why wasn't it some things done prior to this? This shouldn't have never been to where you can't even get streets fixed because the infrastructure is so bad. The council before these people up here, except for three, which is Swan, Julie and Rick. To me, they let the taxpayers down because they just went for anything. Buying this, buying, buying, buying. Now we're in debt, eight, 15 million dollars.
We didn't let you down at all, we didn't let the city down. And the thing of the matter is, we had a proposal to.
Can't hear you.
We had a proposal to sell and that would have been the worst thing that we could have possibly done with this settlement. I'll speak more of it in a minute.
Um. I have one other question. The question was, um, addressed to, to Mayor Ward about how she felt about this sewer deal. I would like to know how does she feel about the transfer station deal? Are you still for this?
The transfer station, there's revenue coming in and sewer deal is money going out. The DEP is going to do their due diligence to make sure that when the transfer station comes here, a traffic study has been done or is in the process of being done, a traffic study has to be done. And DEP will not allow anything to come in here that's not safe for the residents. Legislation was passed on that, I think, last year or so to even reinforce that and under.
under serve communities. So, as far as how I feel about it, if it were to go through, that's money coming in, and the four hundred thousand dollars keeps getting thrown around, it's at least four hundred thousand dollars. Pleasantville does need the money. As far as, and I've said many, many times, that as, on the tax bill, it may only be minuscule dollars on the tax bill, but as a capital improvement, that could get a street done, that could get other things done, that could get our recreation center and everything fixed. So, yes, I, I am more for the transfer station. And I'm not saying that I'm totally against the, this Bernard Capital, but with them finding out that they're a hedge fund, and what they have the potential to do to our city, I'm just a little more reluctant.
So, you are for the transfer station?
I'm not, I'm not saying that, yeah, I, I vote, I, I don't know if I voted for it or not during that time, but it wasn't, I wasn't the one that started it, but yes, I'm for it. I'm for it as far as, if everything comes out right with the DEP and everything safely, yes. Yes, I, I mean, it doesn't necessarily have to be bad for the city, and I think that the way a lot of people are being told about it, to be frank with you, is that it's in just such a negative way. And I heard earlier, Ms. Carrington say, at a town hall meeting, the town hall, I'm talking about a town hall meeting with it, that's not biased, for every, so everybody can really educate themselves to see that I do want this or I don't, you know? And right now, it's just being portrayed as one-sided.
I'm glad, I'm glad it's on the record that you're for it, but there was a town hall meeting that was gonna be unbiased, and then you guys turned it into a council meeting, so people couldn't ask the question that needed to be asked.
Why?
I was at that meeting, and so I think some would, some of these residents were here also, and for you to turn that into a council meeting instead of a town hall meeting was very disrespectful to residents.
You've, you've said that several times.
And it's true.
You've said that several times, and I don't know where you got that information from, that it was started at your council meeting.
Anyone else in the public?
Yeah, I wanna, I just wanna, wait more for my name, but I just wanna clarify this, or clear this part up. It was mentioned that Bernard Capital has been doing this for a long time, they've been doing this since 2013. Okay, you can go on the website and check it out. They're a hedge fund, okay? They're not a regular investment firm. Hedge funds is, is for short term. They want to get in, they want to make money, they want to get out. They're not interested in thirty-nine years being here, believe. Go for it yourself. Louisiana Hedge Fund, Bernard Capital, 2013 is when they first started. So, they have not been around for a long time.
That's right.
Okay, so, check it out, Steve, this, this, listen to the people. You know, if there's other options, when I first heard this, I was, you were saying, this is great for Pleasantville, it's good, we get our infrastructure, it's gonna help us. But then, when you redefine, crank, you know, you talk about four percent, then five percent on four percent, then another two percent on whatever, you know, up in Bayonne, they went from six hundred dollars to two thousand dollars in like seven years. You know, we don't need that here in Pleasantville. You know, we, our kids, we want our kids to, you know, go out, venture out, and come back and live here, they won't be able to come and live in Pleasantville.
Right.
Okay, we're, we're doing a disservice, you know, somewhat, with, with kids not getting the education with the school board, we have to fix that, so we don't want to put another burden on them, and not be able to come here and stay in Pleasantville if they want to. So, check this out. Bernard Capital is a hedge fund. I asked one of their folks, I won't say, who was set between me and, you know, Archie and Beth, and I asked him straight up, I said, is Bernard Capital a hedge fund? And without hesitation, he told me no. Now, there's two problems with that. Either he did not know, or he did not tell the truth. Neither one of those are good. And so, he was here advocating for them, and either you don't know that it's a hedge fund, or you just straight up lied to him. So, that's all I wanted to say about that. So, if you got anything to add?
Anyone else in the public? Tim Jones again. Just real quick, two things.
No, I, I was only up here a couple of seconds ago.
You were already up here once.
Excuse me. Other people have been here more than once tonight, as I do recall, seeing here, just real quick. A lady was here last week, I believe from Orfield, as well as some information that I've become aware of, shows you that the New Jersey Infrastructure Bank has interest rates around one percent to finance infrastructure for municipalities. Has this city ever applied to that fund? Ever? Anyone?
Yes.
And did we fail it?
No.
Oh, one percent versus a three hundred percent.
Anyone else in the public?
Good evening. I wish the microphone was here, because...
This is a saying, you still owe the asset.
Right?
You're, you're on the asset. You owe the asset. I think the other thing is, we're just looking for a revenue stream.
We're just looking for a revenue stream. The representative from Bernard Capital. First thing I would like to know, and take my time to ask questions, because that's all I have time for, apparently, um, who is the firm who reviewed this contract, and who paid for the fees of this firm? That's one question I have. As I'm going through, you can address them after I'm done asking questions. As I'm going through, I see terms and the definition of terms in here, and transfer, when it's talking about transferring, it says lease, sublease, mortgage.
Yes.
A mortgage is a debt. Oh, but we're supposed to be getting out of debt. Okay. Also says, as far as the base case revenue requirement, means the specified revenue stream, which the concessionaire is entitled to receive for each concession year during the term of this agreement. Hmm, they entitled.
Yep.
So, that entitlement is the minimum, right? So, we go to the minimum, and in that terms and agreements of this, it says, any governmental authority, a governmental authority can be from a city, the state, the county, the federal, any changes will trigger...
That's right.
A revenue adjustment.
Yep.
Okay? So...
I read the contract.
You, what does that mean? What, any little thing can trigger it. Another thing, I want to make sure I get it right, uh, this is D, capital improvements, number twenty-three. The city is on the hook for acquiring additional lands for this company. And if they cannot acquire these additional lands, it is considered a delay of it, and requires a revenue requirement adjustment. Fees go up.
That's right.
Right? So, why would additional lands be needed? Is Pleasantville only seven square miles? Where's this land supposed to come from? Will eminent domain come into play? These are just a few of the questions I have in here, including about insurance, and who has to pay for these things. Every time I turn around, it says the city's on the hook, the city's on the hook. And then, it says in here, if they cannot make their payments or whatever...
That's right.
That they don't have to make repairs...
That's right.
To the system.
That's right.
So, again, what is going on here? Did anyone really read this?
No.
Did someone who has contract law, business law, look over this?
Hell, no. Sense.
I'm confused. What, what is all this losses? There's very vague verbiage, there's very vague language. So, maybe I'll take the time every meeting and ask a questions about this thing, because it's extensive.
Yep.
If a Fayetteville company who is a hundred million dollars in debt said no to them, and we only fifteen...
Right.
What's the problem? We can make it work without Bernard Capital.
Yep.
Anyone else in the public? Say the motion to the court, the court.
Motion?
Counsel, counsel, that.
Yes, I'd like to address, um, Ms. Linda, if you don't mind, Ms. Carrington. Um, you know, you guys were talking about the last meeting and how things were done, or how you guys were dressed. You know, that was a very contentious meeting, it was very hot, and there were some things said that I thought were very unfair, especially from people that were outside of this community, and I stick by that. Um, we don't see no one here that's doing anything for our community for years, and all of a sudden, they come in here, like ACUA, who is only worried about it because they're losing money. Um, you know, there's an issue with that. So, if you guys felt that we were a little harsh, well, I felt the same way, you know? And if I was a little harsh, then I apologized. But still, in all, you know, to have someone accuse you and tell you that you're not doing what's in the best interest of the city, or that, that you don't care about the city, that's offensive, just like when the young man said that we're taking money under the table. You know, that's something that shouldn't even be said, that's disrespectful. So, when someone behaves like that, I'm going to address it.
I refer to the city.
I don't want to know about anyone else up here, but I took offense to it, and I'm gonna talk to you guys like I've always done, and speak to you in a truthful manner, and let you know how I feel. So, Ms. Carrington, if you are upset or offended, you know, I apologize, but still, in all, you guys have to understand is that when you're coming at the city council in the way that you do, yelling and hollering from the back like that, that's not the way we should handle ourselves as adults. So, if you can behave like that, and understand, someone is going to address you in a little stiffer manner. So, with that being said, that's it.
Counsel.
I just want to thank everybody. This exercise is, this is good, the discussions that we had today. I just want to thank everybody for your input. They're all well noted, and by all means, please, raise your voices, we're here, listen to you, and certainly, personally, I've learned a lot when I hear you guys speak, and express your concerns. So, thank you very much.
Good evening. I want to say sorry to everybody that I'm glad to hear all your concerns. Like you said, you know, it gets me nervous, you know, how you guys feel, and just keep on giving us your concerns, so we can know how to deal with it. Okay? Thank you, have a best night.
Counsel, one more time.
Your concerns would not go unnoticed. I want to say congratulations to the Pleasantville Recreation Baseball League. They was the recipient of the thousand-dollar grant from South Jersey. Gas is called the Game One Grant Program. Just a friendly reminder, you have a meeting at eight o'clock on Saturday at one o'clock at Max Mandy Field. And lastly, just remember about the, the plastic bag ban, which will go into effect May the Fourth, 2022. Like I said, your comments, concerns would not go unnoticed. Thanks for coming out and voicing your opinion.
Counsel.
Right around this time, fifty-four years ago, Martin Luther King was shot and killed. He was addressing a labor negotiation for sanitary workers, I believe, in Memphis, Tennessee. I just can't even imagine what he would think if he were here. And I think he would be somewhere out in that audience, having to say about a lot of stuff that's going on, and for the good of the people, which is what he always, he didn't care about anything else, but he cared for the good of the people. And I think he would be up there at this podium with a lot to say.
Mayor?
Just good evening, everyone. Thank you for coming out. First of all, I'd like to say welcome and congratulations to our new officer tonight, Meyer Bailey, as our police officer. I know she'll do well, be things are expected of her. I also wanted to remind everybody, this is Autism Month, so wear your blue and support anyone with autism. Autism is just becoming more and more, everyone, there's more and more awareness about it, because they said if you catch the children young, that they can live a normal life. And this is also sexual assault awareness month, so wear your T.O. for that. Avanzar teams up with us every year, and our business administrator last week at one of the schools, well, at the Atlantic City, at Atlantic City School, did a, a project with Avanzar, and it was for human trafficking, God bless you. It was for human trafficking, which many people don't even know about that. I don't know about it, and they're not aware of it. So, I give you credit, Linda, for knowing that. I, oh, as far as your concerns, we have heard your concerns tonight, and this is something that we've been, since, we do not, this is our main course of business at City Hall right now, to be very, very honest with you. That what are we doing with the sewer? What are we doing with the transfer station? What are we doing with taxes? And there's, what Barry didn't say when he stood up here, about, is about other things that even if it weren't sewer right now, there's other things that's happening in the city that would cause us to have to raise taxes or need more revenue too. So, that's not all that we, I mean, it's just, you just don't even understand, and I just want you to know that it's not going unnoticed, but what we don't want to do is sell our last asset, and that's our, that's our sewer system. You know, that's all that we have left, our water's on, so, you know, it's just...
Let's keep control of it, man.
Well, we're not gonna, we're not talking of selling it, we're talking of, you know, leasing it, but it just has to be a good, you know, it just has to be a good thing that we do. So, everyone, enjoy your evening, happy Easter to you all, while you'll be back here before Easter. Hope you'll be easy on the flood of...
On you.
No, I have a lot of comments, other than, you know, to Linda Carrington, I know Linda, and I never, not you or anybody else, would come out of my mouth that call you out of who you are as a person, so I don't know where those calls went to, I just want to reiterate that again, and this time, before you leave, if you can just wait for me for one second, so that I can get your information, to make sure that you get the information that you requested. And anybody else that I give my card to, the number is accurate, and nine out of ten, I answer the call, so I don't know what happened in your case, all right? And speaking about the human trafficking, didn't expect the mayor to mention that, but that is something that we plan to bring to the attention of our young people here in Pleasantville, and we want to catch them young, because a lot of them are involved in social media, and they're not even aware that they're engaging in this type of activity and being exploited in such a way. So, this is outside of the work that I do with the city, but since it was mentioned, I just want to make sure that you all know that we will be bringing that work to Pleasantville as well.
As been said, thank you for coming out. One of the, one of the things, I just want to bring us back to how we got to this point in the first place. It was brought to this council, and a lot, and a couple of council people that are around here. It was brought to us for a ten million dollar sale of our system. The ten million dollar sale of the system, we would have lost control, we would have lost our state aid, we would have lost federal aid, state grants, and federal grants, because we did not, we wouldn't own it, we wouldn't own it. And there were council people that was on this council with me that was for that. We fished it out, committee fished it out, staff report, Swan is not here right now, and we, we put a halt to it. And we've been having ongoing negotiations in different adjunct, adjunct committees to, to find the best solution and the best deal that we possibly can find. And it ain't been, it has not been easy. And it's been a lot of thought process. Please, please, Mr. Jones. Thank you. It, it has not been easy. We've been at it for quite some time, now two years, two and a half, two and a half, two and a half years, trying to do the best we possibly can. Um, thank you for noting that Dr. Kinkins, Jack Hill, fifty-four years ago, and back then, fifty-four years ago, the system did not look like this. God bless his soul, but I don't know if he's standing on his side, because the system don't look like the, the way this system looks right now. Those magical parts within the structure of our infrastructure have to be fixed. And we found the deal a lot better than the deal that would shut down our throat, or typically shut down our throat at that particular time. We keep our state aid, we keep our federal aid, we keep our state grants, we give our federal grants. We take care of the infrastructure of our city, and we'll be able to move forward and bring business to our city. When we're able to bring businesses to our city, we'll be able to take care of the rate rules, we'll be able to move the taxes to, the taxes... moves, we'll be able to move the taxes to it, the taxes that will be done. We have a waterfront that's been, it doesn't bother you? We have a waterfront that we haven't broke, really actually broke ground on, that's been available to be built on for almost twenty, twenty-some odd years. The professionals, our professionals brought us the ten million dollar sale. So we, not only that, we had to sort through our professionals and what they attempted to bring to us to make sure we had a better deal. That deal is, that deal and that company has been shut down, uh, in our city's throat. Their, their sewer system, ninety-seven percent. We want you to absorb those rates, always thought about you, we always thought about you, we're always fighting for you, ever since I stepped forward to do this type of job up here. So we, we weaved, uh, we weaved and ducked and dodged something that could cripple Pleasantville. You're our demographic, you're my demographic. You're part of it, you're part of us up here. And we gotta look out for you. Don't wanna lose our time. Things like that make people lose their time. Deals like that, deals like the one we're attempting to bring right now, builds our town up, make people wanna come to our town to break bread in our town, to have camaraderie. You don't have any, you don't have, in your, in your memories, you don't have any memory of, of going down to the waterfront and enjoying yourself and bringing your family and breaking bread with other family members and things of that nature. Isn't that dope? It bothers me that we don't have the same thing in other communities. We should be jealous that we don't have that, and we should fight for it. And sometimes we're not gonna agree with us? Please, don't do that. I'm a little bit long with it.
That was my question.
We, we should be a little bit jealous of other communities, we should be a little bit jealous, I don't really like huffing and puffing, we should be doing, feeling a little bit jealous of other communities and the amenities that other communities have and do what's best for this community.
We need to get creative about doing that.
Thank you, thank you.
Let's get creative about doing that.
Take a motion to adjourn?
Motion.
All in favor?
Aye.